All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the City Council Work Session. For the city of Biller Beach it is now 6:00 PM and I'm calling this meeting to board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you please call?
Councilmember Frank Bankardt.
Present.
Councilmember Kimberly Shaw Elliott, present. Councilmember Todd Harper.
Present.
Councilmember Jody Shirley. Councilmember Anders Wellings.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reekler.
Here.
City Attorney Nancy Meyer, here.
Thank you Kathy. All right, let's just jump right into our first order of business which is review and presentation of the Gator Pump proposed design in comparison to the B25-02MWI design. Welcome to Gemini Engineering, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you Mayor. Key fact with Gemini Engineering. So tonight from our last meeting, we were, our intent was to provide more of an apples to apples comparison between the Gator Pump system and the system that we had designed and, I'd like to break this up into several pieces because I think there's some competing issues to deal with. Besides the cost comparison, which is just a black and white comparison of the cost, we need to also consider the technical and operational aspects of the systems. And, because that will dictate the system. Even if the costs might be cheaper in certain circumstances, it may not provide the city or public the kind of performance that was our target when we started the analysis. And lastly, there's a considerable amount of discussion on the location of the Gator Pump. That aspect, we, that will be in the city's hands. We will evaluate, additional evaluations based on what the city prefers. So, this presentation, our presentation will be covering just the cost and the technical side of the pump systems.
All right, I'm going to ask the council just to withhold their questions and comments until the presentation ends and then surely people will be more than happy to answer up any other questions. If you think of something, just jot it down right quick and then we'll circle back around, all right? Please proceed.
Yes sir. As you can see here, what we've done is we've listed each of the line items from the bid. So there's several different aspects and it's beyond just the pump itself. And these are considered both labor and materials. But what we've done is we've highlighted each of these elements. The two, there's two critical aspects that have been, the focus of discussions is the pump itself and then also how to get the force main in. And so what we want to do is identify all of the aspects, all of the line items that are tied to each of these two aspects of the, of the design. And so, what I've done is we tried to identify each of these and these are the red items that we've outlined here. So, if we do the directional pour versus the open cut as well as if we go with the Gator Pump versus the MWI Pump. So these are where we've come through and we've identified each of these, and all of these, and it's in the project bids sheets as well.
I'm sorry, but I, sorry to interrupt, but I can't read that unfortunately.
Well.
Is there anybody who can have a printout?
Um, we can run it out.
Do you have it on?
I have the presentation on here.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Can you zoom in? Just, can you pull it up? You should be able to pick it up.
Oh, that works. Thank you.
Had to do that.
Let me go back then. So these are, these are just line items from the bid. So in trying to cost out item by item, what we've done is we've outlined each of these that are open to discussion here. Now, with any system, you're going to have mobilization, you're going to have means of traffic, you're going to have in the protection. So these, a lot of these other aspects, we assume for the purposes of our discussion today that will remain constant. There's also the control panel which we'll get into. There may be a question of why the control panel is on the list and we can step through that as well. And here is, zoomed in a little bit further. These are pipe sizes and the lengths of each pipe and volumes.
Can I zoom out to my floor? Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but are we looking at, I don't see a comparison, I see only values. So which, which one is this for?
This is the estimated from the RWI Pump.
Okay, now what I have to do?
What I'm trying to do is identify which of these line items are open for discussion and what we'll do in the next and what our technical, our senior engineer Ted Sisak with me will help to step through some of the, not beyond the pump and materials and then beyond the actual costs, rough costs to go over the different design considerations.
So the items in red are what you're going to focus the comparison on. The other items, you're just saying, they're common to both, ignore them.
And, for now. It's a very simplified way, but you know, from a contract, it might cost each of these differently, but for us, for discussion purposes, that's what we're doing.
Okay. You guys want to wait for the paper?
Yeah, let's wait for the paper. We're not all squinting and looking silly.
Right.
I can see that. I'm sorry, honors going between. He said do it in comments.
I'm sorry.
Please present honors' presentation.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, we could certainly do that while we're waiting. Do you want to give your presentation right quick?
Sure.
That's okay.
Do I do that?
Sure. We'll probably be able to see that.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Yeah, you got a couple printouts, but there is a video involved.
So Kyle, you said you would help, so I just go to that one, right? And then I go to, press the button, I guess, presentation mode, and, no, but it's not sharing.
Hit the big share button.
Share screen. I think it's open twice.
You guys see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess what I want to do is just kind of, maybe re-ground us on, you know, what we're trying to solve and just make sure we have a common understanding. Not trying to sell anything, but just trying to make sure we're all baseline on a common understanding. So, I highlighted, you know, one of the primary sources of street flooding. So I said, high tides, precipitation, and groundwater. Those are the three things that contribute primarily to the water in our storm shores and then if it gets too much, it builds over, it floods into our streets. So, kind of see where they are and to some people they like, we'll try and make sure we're, but this, how does groundwater get into our pipes? Example here is, you know, like maybe a cracked pipe, you know, crack in the pipe, water seeping through the ground and it's contributing to the water that's accumulating in the drain, right? Just so people have some idea. Okay, so, then what are the primary mitigations that we've been thinking about to address those three things? So the primary thing for high tides, and we'll be focused on more recently, has been on check valves as the way to prevent high tides encroaching onto our flooding, flooding our streets. For precipitation, the primary mitigation is our current storm drains. That's the mitigation, right? If we put a check valve in there, we partially inhibit their ability to do their job when the tide's high. So potentially, and that's something we're going to be considering, okay, that a pump may be what's needed to deal with when you have a high tide, the check valve's closing off our storm sewer system, our stormwater system, and we can't get rid of the water from the streets. And I have a picture of an example on 12th Street of what that looks like. And then the last one is, our mitigation for groundwater ingress is really good just to repair the pipes. Put those liners in there that basically cover up those cracks. We don't pull out the whole pipe, we just put another liner inside and now we're sealed again. And now we can just, now we can ignore and not worry about groundwater anyway. But anyway, those are fixes that we're still working on and debating when we're going to cut them in and so on, and if we're going to cut them in. All right, so just to focus in on the first one, just going to have a common understanding of what the check valves do and how do they help mitigate, you know, high tides. So this is the picture of the check valve that's currently installed, it's called, it came from, it's from a company called Wake Pro. So you just go to a little bit of my background. I have a little video just to kind of visualize, they have a little animation that they sell and I thought it was pretty appropriate just to visualize what, how the water rising on the street and stuff looks like with and without a check valve. So let's go ahead and play that. There's audio with it, but I thought we'd ignore that. So you got a picture of the city, right, and you've got tidal water, there's the drain pipe just like we have all over our streets. And, as the tide arrives, you see here, a little cutaway. You'll see that's tide level rising and without a check valve, it's going to go out into the street. Start to fill up. That's the current problem, that's the problem we had two months ago, right? So now you put the check valve, and this is what Kyle's been doing, he's been going out and putting those check valves out in those ports now, in those drain pipes. Most of the streets, this is what he's done, he's put it right at the, right at the outlet of the sew wall. On 7th Street, he brought it inland a little bit. It's kind of on the, there's a little ramp, there's a boat ramp right there, so he just brought that inlet into one of the manholes because we were struggling with trying to get it to seal around that out drain. So he moved it, it's working great now. But you can kind of visualize, just, I'll just run through it real quick. So that's water draining out from the street. So that's showing that even with the check valve there, water can flow through the check valve. And one of the premier things about this Wake Pro valve is that it opens very easily, you don't need a whole lot of height to get it to open. I guess it's state of the art from being able to open with something like six inches of head height, so basically the difference between the sea level and the level in the pipes. If the level in the pipes is only six inches higher than the sea level, it'll start draining. Now, depending on which valve we got, I think our biggest valve we have is a 24-inch one and it's actually, it will control, you have to have eight, 14 inches, 13, 13-something inches of head height. So the street would be like 14 inches long higher than the sea, whatever the tide level is. I got a little video showing that. But now here's the video showing the tide coming up, it's filling. Now, the water you're seeing on the inside is actually, they're starting to rain, so street water raining. See the tide's higher than the valve, but it's still draining. So it's showing that the, you know, the street level's higher, water level's higher on that side, so it'll drain out. And when the tide falls, everything in the storm sewer will drain out. So that's the basic function. Now this is a little more in-depth view of it and I think I just want to part here on, just point out what the difference is, like where the head height of, what's the sea, what's the, I don't want to get too technical here, but you know, what's the water level out on the intercoastal versus what's the water level in our storm drains? So, you've kind of got on the left side here, that's the level of the intercoastal. And over here on this side, you got the level in our storm sewer system filling up with like a rain event. And what I've shown, and I said, hey, I kind of bracket some, just a general set of numbers or not, I haven't matched it with the exact values, this is just for visualization purposes. So that little bracketed area right here, is basically representing, any flooding in that range is not going to go onto the street. It's going to stay below, it's going to stay in our drains, it can go out. When it gets up higher, that's where we're going to start seeing water on the streets. And then here you follow the side with the, the tide's doing. So here's a little demo of it and let's pause it somewhere along the way and just kind of visualize the delta. So there's rain, you know, tide's low and rain's filling up and it's going away now, nothing's going to accumulate on the streets, all the storm sewers are working great. You kind of see the blue level down over there. Now you see the tide rising and the valve's doing a great job of how much water is preventing from coming into our streets. Now this is showing it building up on the other side and you've got, that's rain, all the water on that side is coming from other sources like rain, sprinklers running on the streets, you know, running off into the streets. And now, see, even with it this high, the tide level, you can see where the tide level is really, really high. If the street level gets really high, it will still drain. So there will, is some straining capacity and you know, maybe there's a foot of water in the street right now, even when the tide's high, it will drain. And we said the difference has to be, depending on which valve we pick, but I think what we got says 13 inches. So if the tide's here, the street would be, and it rains, and it rains, the street would be 13 inches higher than the tide. It doesn't depend on where the check valve is at all, it's all about the two water levels.
What's the head pressure for release?
It just, it's by head height is what they're trying, so it's inches of water is how they spec it. So it's 13 inches of water. So if there's 13 inch water difference, it'll release. And the closing pressure is like, I think it was like six inches. So never totally draining out, it'll never get any closer to.
Do you have a frontal view of that valve that, do you have a frontal view of the valve that you can see how it closes and opens?
Um, well, not a direct front view, but you can kind of see. See right there? You kind of see it's, there's water on the inside and.
What I'm just saying, it doesn't show you how it's actually mechanism actually closing.
It's really just the springiness that's gilt into the rim of the rubber. So it's all about the rubber material and the stiffness of it, which I think is, I guess the magic of the design. So, and they're used all over, so, but this is their big claim to fame, plus their claim to fame, I think, is the ability to not get debris stuck in, as you can see in that video, there's debris in the drain. And yeah, it might get stuck part, you know, one time, but then the next time, it's going to flush right out.
It usually doesn't get stuck down when the water comes out, it'll get stuck in the top corner because the valve is mounted to the shell.
Oh, okay. That's, yeah, these are cleaners, so these experience, you know.
So that's, that's a bladder valve and not a flapper.
I don't know if you want to call it a bladder, but maybe, I mean, it's just a, it's an interesting, I think it's just a different form of a check valve, I mean, of a regular flat valve or something, you know?
And this is what we have.
This is what we have, yep. And it's working great right now. I, let me just, let me go to show you this last thing at the end where, so now I'm draining, I'm trying to catch it right here so you can kind of visualize, right about there. So you can see what the water level is in the pipe, it's higher than the water level on the tide. So that's the point I'm illustrating, that difference is whatever the spec is. And they say that's 14 inches.
It's all about which side has the most pressure.
Right. I mean, if it's on, if the tide side has it, the valve is shut and no water's going anywhere. So the opening side though, it needs 13 inches of tide, of water pressure on the, on the street, on the street side. And I guess the illustration, the point is, I'll give you, I'll get to the example here. So, here's, here's an example of flooding on 7th Street, okay? I did some tide calculations over the last few months and this happens 10 to 20 days per month on 7th Street. This for worse. Now, maybe it doesn't look terrible there, but honestly, with the cars driving through there, there's a splash of water, it's, and it's easily on the higher tide days, I'm sorry, my, this is pre, sorry, this is pre-check valve. So this is pre-check valve. Without, with the check valve, this is zero. We have none of this. And Sunday day ones, any days that it's just a Sunday day out, all the tidal flooding is gone. It's fantastic. But this is what we were dealing with beforehand. And it would cover the street on some of those 20 days, probably cover the crown of the street. Maybe it can go up.
Of course.
All the way over to 8th Street. And you'll get some of the same thing in front of your house as well. But this is what I wanted to just say, highlight again, like, made great progress in this area. So I think addressing the high tide issue for Sunday days, which has been the majority of the problem, we've made great progress and I really wanted to emphasize on that. So, we're down to zero days. I mean, there's going to be a day or two here and there where, you know, we're going to get some debris stuck in it and it might bypass the check valve a little bit, but should be quickly erased, come out and, and be good.
How easy are they, since it's.
I'll call it a flapper.
How easy is it to clean that out?
But if you had a flapper valve, you get, you'll get debris regardless.
Apparently, do we use a paint scraper or get underneath and just scrape around where the valve meets the metal?
It does. Do you find that it gets stuck there frequently or?
Well, a lot of times the particles slowly creep their way underneath.
Right, so yeah, more to clean up because that, that we're going to have to do. Yeah, so that's going to be part of our routine maintenance to have to.
And how fix the rubber like this?
An inch, an inch, they're pretty hard to dig. And so, just moving on there real quick. So the next thing was precipitation, so I talked about high tide, what does a heavy precipitation with a check valve in place look like? And here's a shot from 12th Street. So that's what that street looks like when the check valve was working. I think this was about a one inch per hour rain event, something like that we looked at? Kyle, you might remember. Anyway.
Do you remember the one where you got, after I got that valve?
Okay, yeah, we can go back. Anyway, so this is 12th Street. There's pretty decent flooding here. I mean, this is where the pump will help, this is what the pump would address. And we have to decide constantly, my, I guess my question in the end is what we need to get better clear understanding is like, how frequently does this occur, what's the peak levels and the duration, and decide how badly do we need to do that? You know, how many people are affected, how much is it going to cost, you know, all those pair ups that rest them within our head right now. So, all right, that's it.
I appreciate the presentation. Any more questions for Councilmember Wellings?
Nice job. Nice job.
All right. Now that we have printouts, let's go back to Gemini.
So, with this step back, the, what is presented is what is currently estimated with the MWI Pump System, including wet well, including the force main and sea, it's all, it's everything. And the intent of this is to step us through what aspects of this is open for, you know, to revisit. And really, what I want to focus in on is what this estimate, this almost $290,000, so it's, it's an estimate from us, almost 72% of that current estimate is what we're talking about. So it is a significant portion of that total that we receive bids on. But I do want to now talk about each one. So if you look at the pump only, the pump only, the numbers might, the numbers reflect the current total aspects of the pump, you know, pump and force main and those things directly related to the pump. The wet well, that total right now is $239,000 in the current design. What we have right now is just the pump from Gator. And we were able to obtain their specs, specs about 30 minutes before the meeting. We need more information because the pump itself is, you know, that pump is the instrument, but we also have to factor in the, all the other aspects, including labor, installation. Because if you can keep in mind, when the bid was issued, that estimate that we're showing here of 239,000, that includes installation, labor. So, what I'd like to do is bring on a senior engineer that can step us through, yes, it is a significant difference between 239,000 and 9,500, but to be able to truly get to apples and apples, because this is, this is so complicated. When we first looked at this, we wanted to simplify this, we want, but because there's so many variables here, even in the pump design, when we're talking about the total bang head, it, it becomes a little nearly. So if we could step through with the pump comparison?
My name is Ted Sisak, with Gemini Engineering. So I'm going to go point by point. I believe there was a separate presentation regarding a pump memo that Gemini produced that may have gone up, touched on some of these as well, but I'm going to go into a little more detail of what went into the choosing this particular pump. And the first one is capacity. So, from the memo, we ran several scenarios, real world rainfall scenarios, and we determined that a pump flow rate of 1,600 gallons per minute would basically service the smaller storms and not necessarily the, you know, the hundred year storm, but it would get the more frequent storms and keep the roads dry or at least drain them more than they already were because of high tides. So with the Gator Pump, we originally got an estimate for, I think it was 560 gallons per minute. So, right there, we're only about a third of that required flow rate. So, the number that he mentioned, the 9,500, that would be at least tripled. And that's just for the pump itself, not including the installation. So, there are other. Um, so there are other aspects of the pump installation, um, how the pump is housed, uh, that could factor into the pump cost as well. So the pump consists of an electric motor, at least for this design, electric motor and a pump head. So those two items have to work together, and they can be portable or permanent. We assumed that the city would, um, benefit most from a permanent installation. Um, portable brings its own, um, problems, um, its own considerations. You would have to have somebody to physically man that portable pump. You'd have to store it somewhere. You'd have to get it to the location, you know, set all the hoses up. So these are all factors that we looked at. Um, pump efficiency is another factor. The pump that we were, um, the pump design for the MWI pump that was in the bid runs at 84% efficiency. That means that it's, uh, 84% of the energy put in is what gets put out. Um, some of the Gator pumps that we looked at, and like he was saying, we just got the specs recently, but some of those pumps were only 50% efficient. So you've got increased running costs there. Corrosion, uh, being in a saltwater environment, a brackish environment, that's a big thing. Um, 316 stainless versus 304 stainless. Um, the MWI pump is 316 stainless, because we gave them the specs that we're in a saltwater environment. Um, we don't expect any, um, rust or anything with a 316 stainless, so that, that takes away all of the, um, maintenance, uh, for that aspect. It's not gonna rust away into nothing. Uh, whereas if you choose a, a cheaper stainless option with a 304, uh, possibly coated, you have to inspect that coating regularly to make sure that you're not getting the saltwater intrusion. Um, the actual sighting, uh, the placement of the pump below ground versus hidden. Um, the pump from the bid, it has a wet well, so that is a submersible pump. So that goes underground. Um, you get the benefit of, um, basically an unobtrusive pump location. You just see the, um, control panel. And the pump itself being submerged means that when it does run, it will be, uh, very quiet, because it'll be underwater. Um, some of the other pumps will have the motor, uh, on the surface, and those will be much louder when they do operate. And there's other aspects with security and safety, uh, around an exposed motor. Cavitation, vortexing, and minimum submergence level, these are all, um, factors that go into choosing the axial flow pump from MWI. Uh, cavitation can happen when you have too little inlet pressure or too much outlet pressure. And cavitation is just, um, basically, I don't know if you're familiar with boating, but if your impeller is spinning too fast in the water, and you're not going anywhere, you're cavitating, and you're creating these little air pockets that are actually exploding underwater. So that can cause pitting to the impeller. Um, and vortexing is when the impeller does not have enough water head in the wet well, and actually vortexes and sucks air into the impeller, creating cavitation as well. Uh, the control panel aspect of this has to be, has to meet the national, national electric code. And the, I guess the, um, highest level would be NEMA 4X. So it has to be rated for, you know, the outdoor use, um, and these are all, uh, factors that go into the, um, choosing these particular control panels. Um, they have all the floats come with it, and we can set up all of the levels of the pump on, pump off. And one thing that I think really drives the choice of this MWI-style axial pump is it has a track record. So they use these pumps elsewhere. Um, you know, several areas in South Carolina where they use these for stormwater management. Um, so they have a track record, there's, um, you know, we have a com, a level of confidence that this is the right choice for, uh, this type of application. Uh, we don't have the same, uh, level of confidence for the, the Gator pump. Um, we don't know if there are case studies. Uh, if there are, we, you know, like to get our hands on those and, and see how they look. Um, but that's all kind of a lot of information about what goes into choosing a particular pump. Uh, the other aspect of the comparison is the force main itself. So the original bid has open cut and, uh, some trenching for the force main. Um, the other options we are looking-
What did you call that? Sorry, what did you call it?
Force, force main?
Forced main?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so that would be what's the outlet, from the outlet of the pump.
Okay, outlet of the pump to wherever we're going, that's called force outlet, okay?
Yeah, force main, yes. And, um, so two different, uh, installation types. You have the open cut with the trenching, so you go from the pump, trench it to where you're gonna cross the road, then you cut the road, lay the pipe in, you know, recover it. Uh, the other option that we were looking into, that we didn't originally, was directional boring, or I believe jack and bore. It might also be called jack and bore, depending on if it, if it's angled or not. Uh, but, uh, we were given an estimate, uh, by, um, Councilmember Anker, and he estimated roughly $25,000 to do the, like, the jack and bore force main installation. And we added up all of the open cut costs that would be, uh, relieved from that, and we came up to around $49,700. So it's not a huge difference there, but it may, it may make some things easier, you know, avoiding, uh, certain, um, um, the utility impacts. But there are actually, um, potential environmental risks. Um, we would need a geotechnical investigation, so that would add some cost to that. And for jack and bore, you have pits on both ends, so that you can dig down, put your machinery in the pit, and then press your pipe under the road. So it's not, um, it's not as simple as just, you know, sending the pipe through the dirt. Uh, there are other aspects to it. But those are the details that I have.
And, and I do want to emphasize, it's, we're providing this comparison based on the information that we do have. It's not to say that Gator pump can't work. We're just explaining what we don't know of Gator pumps. And that these are considerations from an engineering standpoint that we would have to consider. Um, and, uh, in terms of the installation as well, um, we weren't sure whether, uh, the directional boring was intended to be that, uh, jack and bore, the auger boring, or whether it was directional drilling. There's, there's two different types of installation, um, of, of non, non-cut, non-open cut. And both of them, uh, there's a risk. Uh, there's, uh, when you go underground, you have to know, and usually it's a straight line, and you go perpendicular to the other utilities, because you don't wanna go, and there, there's the conflicts of. And so you have to have, uh, a lot more study. You need space if you're gonna be doing any kind of directional drilling, because there's a big machine that you put on the end. And so you need, I think we have to get about 10-foot, about 25-foot pit on one side. So think of a large hole, and it will have to be dewatered, you put the machinery in. So can it be done? Yes. Uh, we would still want to discuss, I mean, I think it is, is, has been brought up, so we would want to, uh, I guess, research this with the companies, not just one, to see if, what is that total cost? I think the $25,000 that we're seeing here, if it is truly the estimated cost, understanding the actual location, this is specific to 9th Street, by the way. Um, the direct, the, the location of these, I think this is one aspect that, uh, I don't think it's in our court to be able to make that decision. But we would want to discuss in this application, in this current situation, whether the $25,000 estimated, we consider, um, would be considering all of these other aspects. Uh, because it was, you know, I think it would change considerably if, uh, if there's details, um, regarding the, the layout and the environment. Um, so those are the numbers, the straight numbers that you see on that dirt slide. Uh, but there's a lot of, significant number of variables that would have to be addressed. Um, and I think we brought up the portable pump, uh, the permanent versus portable, because, uh, at the time, just looking at the website, it appeared that most of Gator pumps were more portable, uh, on, on, I guess, tracks and, and on wheels to be able to take and then remove, more agricultural related, which may work, we're not saying it won't. All we know is the pumps that we are used to for this environment, for this purpose, uh, has been tested. And, and like Ted mentioned, that, uh, you know, we'd love to discuss with, uh, the Gator pump, uh, individuals have been gracious to be able to help us understand what their products are, very knowledgeable, um, and we're, you know, more than happy to continue discussion, discussions with them at their, you know, availability, with them there to know more about it. But there's several things that, uh, you know, still are very much outstanding.
Did they by any chance offer a, uh, a list of communities that are utilizing their pumps now?
Uh, I believe we discussed on the phone, I guess, several locations on coastal areas, but we have not received any specifics. I think that's where the case studies would come in.
Counsel?
Well, we, we spent, uh, I guess, a good three hours of Gator, of the Gator's engineer. It's been working with Gator's-
Where's my phone?
They've been, this engineer's been with Gator on and off since 19, I think, the 50s or 60s, something like that. Um, and after this whole thing went, went through, he says, this is what you compare it to. He says, you're spending around $250,000 for a pump, which a farmer could do for the same price of around $25,000. He says, and I'll tell you why. He says, the pump for the MWI, great pump, he said. But you're putting in a pump that's supposed to be working 8,000 hours a year. That's what that pump's designed to do. When we only need a pump to work 8,400 hours a year. So he says you're looking for a Mercedes rather than a Ford, and he was trying to compare it. Now, they didn't put the right figures in, because the $9,500 figure was a 3-inch pump at 560 gallons. They came back and they said we can do a 6-inch pump for $45,000 with electrical panel box, which will actually give you 100, I think, GPM more than, than the MWI pump. The other part is, it is a 304 stainless compared to a 316 stainless, but they also do a powder break coat before they even put, uh, after they build a pump. So they have pumps in existence in saltwater areas where over 25 years they're sitting, no problem. So the problem is, I'm looking at all these figures, and the trenching is at 25,000. If you went up to the, uh, 6-inch pump, that would be 29,000. Um, but if you're looking at all these other figures here, because I, I took your spit, your bid specs, and I just started highlighting everything that would be eliminated if we didn't do a trench and cut, or just did a directional bore. Now, I understand what you're saying, that you're doing, you're going underground. If you're going underground, probably less than 50 yards anywhere we're doing this, is that a fair cause?
Yeah, under 50 feet.
We just did directional bore from San Katie all the way down to 1st Street. We just did directional bore from 7th Street to 15th Street, uh, when we had that water main or that sewer main break.
That, that was in our city, that, that was-
No, I was just saying, they did directional bore for that whole length, okay?
Is that classified directional bore for, for underground?
So directional bore's been around for, I don't know how, I've known it for 35 years. Um, we don't have all this, uh, exceeding and reg rubbing, utilization, bringing in for $41,000, you're talking. A directional bore, a small utility trailer with pipe and bore in it. This, this bid that you put out, we're gonna have to have backhoe, roller, barber grain, uh, probably a compaction unit, vibrating roller, um, blacktop modified.
Eliminate all of that.
Well, that's, that's what the $50,000 is comparing to?
Yeah.
And with the $25,000, and when I, when you say directional boring, are you talking, uh, directional drilling? Where they go parabolically, or you, are you saying jack and bore?
I'm going with the paradoxically directional boring. Going down two feet, I believe, I believe Pales County Code, you have to go two feet underneath the road.
It's usually three feet.
Okay.
Um, but there's a risk of anytime you go under, there's always a geotechnical investigation that has to be done. Because when you don't know where everything is, and the type of, you know, in this case sands, um, and that's, it's a significant risk. But it's, it's not that it can't be done. Again, these are options. Uh, the environmental, because the, you have to have these pits on both sides. On the, uh, the bay side, you're gonna have to put in more likely a copper dam, uh, for it to receive the, the open- and usually when they do that, it's a larger casing. And so you have a lot of this that's gonna be pushed, uh, and you need, where the machine sits, it's a very large pit, it's got, can't sit on the surface. It's a very large, large pit to put the machinery in. So can it be done? Absolutely. I'm not saying it can't be done. It's just that we don't know what that $25,000 that was estimated includes.
Well, that would be, that would be the pipe, it would be the plumbing out and up and over, but it would be the piping through there. And I'm sure any directional bore company, and I don't know about anyone down here, I only contacted one.
Yes.
Um, has the environmental studies before they do.
Yes, yes, that would have to be done.
Do their own environmental studies, okay?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know. But that would have to be done, and the permitting would have to be done. It's a different type of permitting versus, uh, open cut, just because of the risk. So that is, that's our comparison, we-
I'm, I'm just coming up with a figure well below $100,000 compared to, what do we have, $450,000? And that, I'm talking staying with the 6-inch pump.
Right. Uh, with the, with the contingency, it's four, without the contingency, it's four. And what we said was that when you factor in these line items that are tied to the pump and are tied to the installation, the force main, that comprises 72% of that $400,000. And to be able to accurately compare to what was accurately bid, we know all in what the number is for what our system is currently today, the MWI and the open cut. We know what that is. We know pieces of the alternative methodology. Again, not that it shouldn't be done, but there's so many other aspects, even the, just that, we haven't even talked to the, uh, Gator pumps about our, the, the total head that's needed, dynamic, dynamic head. We're just talking about the pressure, like Ted was talking about. Uh, when you look at pumps, we as engineers provide, um, the information necessary for the pump, and it's very complicated, for the pump specialists to tell us what pumps will work in our environment. We give them the conditions, and they have to factor in the RPM, the power-
Well, he did all that, he was doing all that.
Well, we provided that memorandum, but that was previous to what these are. And then, you know, I think there's, could, could these work? I don't know. Possibly, maybe, yes. Uh, we know that the MWI does, because it is just a tested, and it, and it, I don't know if, you know, this is a catalog. I think what you need is, in this environment, um, you know, I, I would feel more comfortable with that higher resting skill. I would not want to design to below that and have, after a year, two years of heavy, you know, you do- and have after a year, two years of heavy, you know, use. I, I would not want to come back to City Council and, and say, look, you know, we should've gone with another higher-end pump.
All right. All right. Let's, uh, let's give some others time to speak. Vice Mayor, what would you like to say?
First of all, I'd like to say that I think Gemini has done everything we've asked you guys to do and I appreciate that. The third option, that was a kind of addressability by Anders when he was talking earlier with his presentation, is to not do any pumps. Um, and that's a decision we have to make as a council. And I think you identified on this particular sheet. So if we had to just estimate, Kyle, when this particular picture, obviously it shows 12th Street covered with water. And I've, I've asked you this question a few times. Oftentimes in stormwater design, you guys will assume that the volume of water in the street is considered storage. It's not really flooding a house in this particular pitch.
Right. Um.
It's flooding, it is getting on the, on the driveway.
A little bit of the driveway.
Right.
And also keep in mind that as long as the check valves are working the way they're supposed to, this water is on freshwater from the rain event.
Yes.
Okay? You've also addressed, which I thought was rate, the peak flooding levels because there's gonna be an opportunity when the level, and it's gonna vary by street and it's gonna vary by elevation of the, um, outfall pipes that are in the intercoastal, when it's gonna.
Actually, it wouldn't, wouldn't depend on where the elevation of the outfall, but it does depend on where the elevation of the street is. Because like I said before, it's about the water level.
It's head inches.
It's water levels, the two water levels. Nothing to do with where you put the check valve, higher, lower, whatever. Obviously, out of the water, it's not gonna do anything. But in the water, it's all about two headlights.
That's correct.
Nothing, the outline of the pipe, doesn't matter. I don't understand too much, but keep going.
Well, the head, if the outfall of the pipe is 30 feet down below, that's a heck of a lot more pressure.
Nope. Don't worry.
We'll argue that later. So, um, so just estimate, Kyle, in this picture, how, how deep do you think that water is? I always get very close to it. It comes up to.
What, what street is that?
That's 12th Street, so it's right up to the driveway edge.
And cresting the road.
It is cresting the road there, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, and of course, our, our roads are.
Are crowned.
Are crowned in the middle. Yeah, so, so again, I think that's a decision we need to make. But we consider that a huge deal coupled with the fact, as you also identified with the bullet point, the duration of the flooding.
Right.
So how long is that gonna be in this state?
Right.
Do we wanna spend X amount of dollars for a scenario where it may be, many guys have lived this and seen it. So again, assuming the check valves are doing their job, which that's the assumption I'm gonna make. And we have a rain event. It could rain for, for 30 days consecutively. Um, at some point, the intercoastal elevation's gonna go down and all the water's gonna leave.
Yep.
That type of deal. So how long will that water actually stay there? And is it in our best interest to spend the money of our taxpayers' dollars to do something that may not be lasting a long time? That's my only point.
All right.
Yeah. So what was, what was that? Were the check valves working?
That was check valves were not, uh, working.
Were not working.
What's that?
So again, I'm, I'm making the assumption that.
Yeah, that you stand in the water with your check valve not working.
Right.
On what street?
That was seven.
I'm confident that it'll never happen again because Kyle's on top.
All right.
Mayor, man, I think you, you hit on a lot of these aspects that were part, I think Ted mentioned the previous memo. So what we did in the previous analysis early this year was to take actual storms from 2024, subtle storms. And so we know in the reality of the duration of flood without pumping systems, we know how, how long the duration is of flooding on the streets. We also know the, uh, what's necessary to have been in place where the streets do not flood. How, and so those aspects, the duration, the intensity of rainfall and what you're designing to, I think those were all considered. I, I know that those were all considered as part of our analysis.
They were.
Yes, sir. They were all considered as, because we were looking at real events, real storms. So that we can say for, for the community to understand, um, more effectively would be based on what has happened, what they've observed. That's why we picked those storms instead of some hypothetical storm. And, and this was more of a nuisance, I guess, the definition of nuisance, I think we can get into, but it was getting into the streets. And it was not, uh, from the beginning, was not trying to prevent flooding from a deluge, you know, from a hundred-year event or even 25-year event. But it was those, you know, maybe two, three inches of rainfall in a short amount of time. And so it was really narrowed in that area.
Thank you very much for that insight. Uh, Kim? Very quiet.
I'm a little bit frustrated and a little bit befuddled. Um, we've been talking about this for over two years. Um, your predecessors initiated the discussion here. Um, so we've been presented a very thorough analysis, um, a, an expert engineering report that presents a premium system that they have a high confidence will work. We have members here that feel that the city can't afford it and are not likely to vote in favor of it. We have an alternative system that we've gotten, as far as I can tell, nothing formal about it and have no idea what it really will do and how it specs out, but presents some interest and some promise. And then we have a statement for, well, maybe we just do nothing. So that's a wide range of options for two and a half years of work. We are one year away from the end of the next flooding season. So almost no time to do anything about it. So we're in a really bad place here, I think. I don't understand the process. Like, why don't we have an analysis of alternatives? Why don't we have data for you to do a full analysis and comparison? So what failed here and what do we need to do to fix it?
So as far as the Gator information, we met with them twice, um, over the last couple of weeks. And they, they made some promises. They did quote a larger pump. They did send, they were, they were gonna send specs over. He tried several times to give those specs. He made one last effort, did an email to Dan. They did send something over, but it wasn't exactly what they said they would deliver. Um, and right now we're sensing that maybe they feel like they spent too much time on this, um, so they're not providing a bunch of information. The guys said that upfront, that they were gonna spend up, they're happy to spend an amount of time, but if they felt like it was dragging too much, um, that they were only spent so much. Um, and then as far as something we talked about in the past, if, if you like Gemini to make comparisons and, and study these pumps with all the specs applied into the Mahdols, um, they need that information and they need a little more time to do that. They're not getting it from Gator.
Do they have competitors?
There's all sorts of pumping competitors.
So have we reached out to anyone else?
How many different pumps?
Uh, two or three. I mean, we don't wanna go to, you know, those that we don't know or have not heard of. So FLYC and MWI are pretty well-known.
And it sounds like Gator will be more than happy to sell us their pumps, but they don't wanna work hard for it because they're gonna sell pumps anyway.
That, that's what I'm hearing. So we haven't really gotten a viable alternative. But we haven't sought other competitors. So I don't know how to, I, I don't know how to vote on this.
Well, the problem is, is that, um, this particular topic, I have not been able to get any consensus from this group. Every time we meet, it's, it's steer a different direction. It's never, uh, this is what we're gonna do and let's move forward. It's always the what-ifs that are stalling the project. Uh, the what-ifs are certainly, um, they need to be considered, uh, but during our initial analysis, we just said, give us the, you're the professionals. Give us your solution. And that's what we've received. Uh, we don't have the Gator factor figured in. And I, uh, as much as I do appreciate the check valves are repaired now, I, uh, I still think that, that I am open to a pump system. I would love to spend one-fifth of the cost to, to, to do a prototype. I don't know what it's gonna cost to do the analysis to even determine if it's viable or not. Uh, but even if they come back and say, nah, you don't wanna do that, it's not gonna work out. Well, then we can at least say why and we've all, we're all presented with the, the best option for the city. Uh, so, um, I hope that answers some of your questions.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, you would like to proceed with what we have in front of us and come up with a complete proposal and put it up for a vote.
Uh, that would be fine, but I'd also like to hear what the rest of the council has to say. Because I'm looking for consensus. And so I want this group to agree. It's not gonna be 100%. I know that's not gonna be the case, but I need a majority vote.
Excellent.
Whenever we put it up for a vote and it's dumb not to, or to put it up for a vote whenever we can't even get this car out of the, out of the gate.
Interested.
Mr. Harper?
Where to start? I agree in a lot of circumstances that you've got two, two and a half years worth of analysis, worth of back and forth and all the elements that go with that. Um, there's a huge number of unknowns here, just a huge number. And then when I hear the company is hesitant in responding and hesitant to do this, and I look at all of these questions that still need to be answered, it's like, well, if they can't work with you to sell it, how are they gonna work with you to service it? That, that's my first red flag. Um, my other red flags really get into the idea of if you go with a solution, then you're suddenly gonna have to add an entire budgetary element for maintenance in support of that on top of what I think is above and beyond what the submergible solution would be. So you're dealing with capitation and mortexing and submersion. It's all of these things that go with it. Um, I am all for the idea of saving money for the city, but at the same time, I'm all for getting a solution in place and getting it done and having a, a very valid reference of what works and what doesn't work. So the MWI works, great. And that gives us time to look at alternative solutions and other, great. But this needs to be done and needs to be done sooner than later. Because my understanding, when we were talking about this back in the earlier part of the year, that it was still a six-month lead time to work the pump. So we're now in November, so we're now talking June, July of next year.
Now the season.
And it only gets worse. So I, I see us pursuing this model to save money. I agree with that. But the idea of delaying this another six to 12 months is not something I'm interested in doing.
Thank you very much. Anders, you've been, uh, doing a lot of research and, um, you've had a lot to say. I'd like to hear what you've got to say tonight.
Um, I guess I, I.
Sorry, can I hear you?
Yeah. I agree with the discussion. Maybe some of your, Kim, like, I feel like the MW, the MW, what's the name?
MWI.
NWI pump system was a design and we have competitive bid it, right? We've got four bids at the table and we're looking at maybe the two lowest as a, as a viable option. I was pretty much there. I'm ready to go with that. You know, maybe there's a little debate about. I, I kinda agree, let's just keep going and do it for ninth. Was there a press to go for seventh or maybe whatever the worst street is? Yeah, but that's just gonna set us back and the eventual plan is to do the other streets that need it.
Right. So I'm okay with, we did all the homework and invested like a few, two and a half years and just do it online and get it done. Um, the Gator pump design, I struggle with really like, what's, what are we trying to? I'm still back to like the three points we're trying to achieve, which is, I said at the end, like, we wanna minimize the duration or we wanna minimize peak. I, I've kept on bringing up peak flood levels to you because in your simulation that you did, you did that for me. And I, we said, even with the pump you picked, we took rainstorms from the last two years, I think it was. And we said, how many of those rainstorms are gonna flood all the way up to the garage of people's houses? Not just the street. That's an example of the street, a little bit on the road. That's not the worst we've seen in the last year, excluding hurricanes and others, right? So I'm, I'm still struggling in my mind with, okay, well, there's four or five storms that you highlighted that lasted, last two years that were worse than that. And they would've gone all the way up the driveway of people and into the garage. And I thought that to me was a different threshold, like, yeah, I mean, it's rainwater, it's not gonna hurt their lawn as bad as the saltwater. So I think we fix the saltwater from. I don't want to replace your yard every time that happens. But, but if you end up in the garage again, there goes the drywall and you're back to doing these repairs. Now, how many times does that happen? Okay. One in a hundred years with a hurricane, okay? But how many times does it happen with just our rainfalls? And you showed it in the last two years. That's gonna happen three or four times a year. It's not gonna happen to everybody's house. So like on ninth, his modeling showed, I think, two houses. Do we do this just for two houses? Is that the right thing to do? I mean, pardon me, and I, I've got people on that street that says, you know, I don't want it because I don't wanna drive through it. But like you said, the threshold, what's the real threshold that we're? That's what I struggle and I think we struggle too. Like, how painful is it and how many residents do we have? And when does it become worth it? And, uh, this is where I also may weigh in the pilot approach. Let's try it and see if it works. So I kinda still end up with all that with, let's do it. And I think if we go with something that's like a 500 gallon per minute pumping system, we're dealing with not just three or four houses getting the flooding into the driveway, but more people getting it. And I feel like, you know, again, we're gonna have to manage expectations because it's not, people are gonna see flooding on the street, even with a pump there. And they're gonna be like, ugh, I can't believe you guys spent that much money. And they're still flooding on the street. And I would just like to minimize that pain and be very transparent about what you're gonna get. So I'm still in the camp of, like you said, not enough info yet. I mean, I would've liked to have seen a line item by line item. And I think when you, you tracked it, your number here, there's still $100,000 on the table. When you pulled it out, so now add the Gator pump on top of that. So I don't know how we get under $100,000 when the rest of the items that you excluded are over $100,000. So I don't know, what was it, the pump? And then why does the pump only $9,000? Is that because there's no?
It's a three-inch pump.
There's no, there's no control panel? There's, I mean, the major, there's no well, there's no pump? There's, I mean, the major, there's no well, there's no pump, there's no, I mean, there's a pump, there's no well, there's no control panel? Okay, all right, so.
It is, it's a different type of pump. It's typically like an agricultural pump.
Right, right, right.
And the control panel is pretty expensive, but by law, by code, you have to have one.
So if we upped it to the same level as a 1,600 gallon per minute, are we still talking the same pump? I mean, same kind of design? Or do we need to get back into control panels now? We need wells now?
Yes, they all go together. And so, again, the Gator pump, the representative is very knowledgeable.
Right.
And that might be, if I may, you know, with the contractors who bid, I don't know if that's an option for them to reach out with us to have discussions with the contractors who bid to have them modify and to see if there are savings and to use, to look at other pumps. That could be an option.
Can you put the video I sent you guys of the six-inch pump?
Oh, I don't have it on mine, I'm sorry.
Anyway, back to my, I guess that's the bigger thing in my mind. 500 gallon per minute versus 16. 16 kind of controlled the flooding level to what I felt like was worth some money and would relieve people's pain a little bit. This one, I feel like it's going to create much pain and we're maybe going to kind of where it's going to end up, somewhere between 100 and 200,000. And I feel like there's going to be a lot of disappointment in the end, unless we go all the way up to the 1,600.
That's why I said with the six-inch pump, each give you 100 gallons more per minute.
Okay, so we could get up to 150 or 1,600 or something, 1500.
Seventeen and a quarter. That would be $45,000 with the.
Okay, and then we got to go to wells, we got to, there's wells now, we got to put control panels?
That depends on how big the circumference is we consider the pump. But here's the pump, here's a six-inch pump.
So a six-inch pump, I'm not related, six-inch pump equals how many gallons? It's a 1,600 gallon?
That one would do 1,700 a gallon.
Okay, okay, so that'd be in the same ballpark then, okay.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
But that's not that.
But that, but that's not what's modeled, that's not what's estimated here. So then I would, that would be, and do we want to spend more time building out those numbers? Is that something we can get in a week or two or?
No, we can, you have to redesign for a Gator pump, right? Like you don't have.
Okay, so there's effort on your part, but there's not like a basic plug and play into the current quoting system. We just use these numbers to kind of get us in the ballpark.
Basically, if you did a lift box, how much is your lift box? I think you had something in there for like $10,000.
Which one?
You're talking about the sum?
Your original bid.
Talking about the wet well?
Yes.
The. The pump structure wet well was 19,000 from Ken. From Ken, yeah, yeah.
And you put your pump in there for 45,000. All right? The directional board.
I mean, realize that the original pump was 130,000.
Right.
So we're talking, we're talking a difference of $90,000, just like making a big difference.
Yeah, two or three hundred.
I mean, everything else is pretty much there. I'm assuming we go to the big pump, we're talking control panels. So we're debating $90,000 in my mind.
Between the two sisters.
Between the two sisters, but I'm just throwing big numbers out there. I mean, someone, I just did that in my head, so maybe someone has to validate that.
I'm just saying, so if you did their lift box, directional board, Gator pump, you're talking 90,000.
Total?
Yes. We had to.
That, I'm not following how, and I don't want to debate the camp, but I'm not following how we got there because.
Well, 45 for the pump and the lift box. 19 for the lift box, regular station board. And 34, well, it would be 30, it would be, or 34 directional board.
But what about the other 100,000 we didn't include? That we didn't, the 100,000 that he, all these things that are not in red?
That's all blue, yeah.
That's, that's all costs that we've made.
You're not doing, you're not doing, you're not doing clearing rubbing.
All right, so you're, you're not in agreement?
You're not doing the.
No, but he's saying, but he's saying all the things that are not in red are still included.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying.
Erosion control is still there.
Protection is still there.
Right, you're saying the 20.
All right, this, this meeting is getting a little out of hand.
Yeah.
Right, I understand where you're coming from, Frank, and well, and I understand where you're coming from also.
Okay.
It sounds to me like you were in favor of moving forward.
I'm in favor of moving forward on night with the, with the bump in that we got.
Okay, city manager, do you have any comments? Would you like to add anything to this?
I mean, just from what I'm seeing, you know, what Jim and I designed, they're confident in, it's a good pump. It's been fully studied and they're behind it. When we look at talking Gator and trying to come up with another cheaper way to do this, it's kind of really shoddy how we're kind of throwing it together. And it may be a way to do a really cheap setup with their pumps, but I don't think it's interchangeable with these two projects. And maybe, maybe, you know, in like South Street Park or area, we could put a pump above the ground and it could be a little bit louder, we could experiment with Gator pumps. But with the amount of engineering that they put into it, then to change just to get a pump, I don't think we're even value of what we're going to do.
Yep, I hear you. Okay, so this is, just listening to everybody and giving Frank credit for, for his research.
Yeah, thanks, Fred.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Fred.
I am, I'm leaning towards if we're going to do a pilot project, let's do a real pilot project and do two of them. One, it compares to this project. So we do one project here, do the research, find out if it's even viable to do a Gator pump, if it'll actually work for us, find a second spot. And next year, let's throw one of those out there if it's viable. And then we watch them and let's see how well they perform and.
Kind of like that.
I like that idea.
Kind of like that idea, yes.
Because, because if it actually works and it's one-fifth of the cost or.
Yeah, that'd be the better thing to run.
Yeah. A way better route to go.
Right.
But the other side of that is if the Gator proves to be a maintenance nightmare, then you know that too in the, in the idea of the control pilots.
Right. The, the advantage of going this route is that we already have a design plan. We're not continuing to kick this can down the road. We're offering the, some of the low areas some relief and we can actually see how that project works also. Again, Kim's right, two and a half years, how long it's been. We've been, we've been debating on this and what I'll say right now is if, if I have three votes, whenever we bring this to a vote, I will be the fourth and I will move forward on it. At the same time, I will vote to move ahead with researching Gator pumps and finding a second location. And then we've offered two, two solutions for our community. And, and we'll just see how well they work because we may be pleasantly surprised or we may be very disappointed. I don't, I don't know where else to go with this. Frank, how do you feel about that?
I just can't see coming, putting 40 years into this trade. I've seen engineers, don't take this the wrong way, I'm going to probably insult you, but engineers will design in Mercedes-Benz plan for people that don't know what they're looking at, okay? And I've seen the council and I've worked on jobs and we're looking at, and we're, we're making money hands over fist, okay? And we're saying, you don't need this, you don't need this, you don't need this, you don't need this. And it's just wasted, wasted money. And I said at the beginning of the year on the record, we ought to scrap Main Street and look at alternatives. I said that to you when we were met in Conwell's chambers over there.
That was changing locations, right?
Well, we should just scrap this whole thing and we'll do the whole different thing. But $450,000 and you have an engineer that does nothing but pumps saying, a farmer could do this for 25, okay? And you're spending over $250,000 for that. And working in this field, I have to agree with that. And I can't see our finances for $450,000 going to Second Street, this street, Seventh Street, 12th Street, 14th, we got to go to what, 16th Street?
13th and 18th.
18th, okay, 18th, so I can't, I don't see that, we don't have the resources, is what I'm saying. I really believe, I know nobody wants to hear it, to go back to the drawing board and I told them that on the phone, but we need to go back to the drawing board of this. I mean, Gator gave us three hours of free time. I don't blame him for getting, you know, saying enough's enough. This is, this is, this is what we have, this is what we showed you we can do. If you want to do it, we're here for you. I, I can't vote for this.
Okay, any other comments before we move on to the next topic? Anyone? All right, now we are on to the 22nd Street presentation of the Phase 3 Stability Analysis Project for the 22nd Street Bridge. Jim and I is up again. Mike, I'm going to, I'm going to hold your comment until we have their presentation and then I'll bring you right up, all right?
I want to go home too, but you're stuck here with me, bro.
I'll keep going there. We've done that before.
So from our last meeting, we summarized the situation where DOT has issued a plan of action, City, regarding the scour critical designation for the 22nd Street Bridge. And there's been, I guess the designation has been there since 2013 and the issue began in January of this year. And typically there's a path to address this and it's, it's more about the unknown. And what we've done is we have a structural engineer that is on our team, will be on our team. And they're very well versed in bridges and scours in the Tampa area. And so what typically happens in, in talking with DOT is that the uncertainty is on the depth of the piloting. How deep does it go? Because that will determine the level of scour, it's erosion that the, underneath the bridge where the tiles are. It just exposes the piles. So what typically happens is there is some form of non-destruction, non-destructive evaluations, NDEs that are done. And some are called the piloting testing, the ultrasonic testing, there's a variety of different ones. Speaking with, and so the intent was to develop an estimate that included these NDE tests as well as bathymetric surveys, geotek surveys, and provide all of that information for the structural engineer to develop their Phase 3 stability analysis. Now, we have estimates for this. Some, some of these, the NDE costs are, they range from a simple $5,000 up to $70,000. Speaking with the structural engineer and his professional experience, for a single span bridge that we have, it's a 40-foot long bridge. For that bridge, he is explaining to me that there is an alternative process that is, you know, typically followed and that this Phase 3 analysis really doesn't apply to this, to the single span bridge. And that a spending on the order of $160,000 estimated to perform the, the testing, the, the bathymetric survey, the geotechnical and the structural stability analysis. To spend that much money, you still at the end, there will be uncertainty and there's, we might still be back here to look at options to design countermeasures. So his explanation to me was that he's with this because the, there's an unknown in the piloting link, that there's a process called the Unknown Foundation Procedure Manual. So he can proceed with that instead of spending $160,000 approximately to get out of Phase 3. Because it's a single span and because of the uncertainties involved, we still may have to pay additional for the countermeasure design and so forth. So his recommendation is, what I'm sharing here on the screen, is a bathymetric survey of the 100 feet on either direction of the bridge. That's necessary regardless of what direction we go in. What he is proposing is to provide a structural and scour assessment. What that would include is, is reviewing the existing information, doing the patimetry. There's existing scour calculations as well as hydraulic calculations through here. And reviewing these and providing a path forward where he would estimate the cost of, provide cost and just the path forward for the countermeasure implementation. Designing countermeasures, that's adding a rip rap to the, to the, on the bed. Or doing the bridge redesign. So at the end of this assessment, you, the city council will have two paths forward, pros and cons. And based on his experience, part of that is to provide a more accurate, reliable estimate of the, the estimated remaining service life of the bridge. So for planning purposes. So if there are other reasons to replace the bridge, that can be considered in, you know, with the, just to put the, implement the countermeasures. And so this estimate here of, and I think the last meeting estimate is something in the word of $100,000.
Right.
This estimate here will go straight into an assessment which will provide the city a blueprint of going down either path. And we have some estimates of going down those paths as well. So in addition to this, approximately $63,000 to see here. If assuming, and his assumption is, we want to go down the countermeasure path. Design, approximately $50,000. Implementation, you know, contractor and so forth, under order of 500 to 600,000. So that would be the going down the countermeasure path. And like, as I mentioned last time, based on the cost of bridges that he's seen, even for the single span like this, he estimated that the replacement, full replacement of that bridge would be on the order of four to five million.
And that's?
Four to five million. So we, by going down this road, we are saving approximately $160,000 not performing the geotechnical, not performing the additional scour calculations using what's available. And, and at the end, there's a discussion with DOT to still remove the scour critical designation once the countermeasures are installed, if we go down that road.
All right, council, you have any comments or questions?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds like it makes sense.
Yeah, it sounded like.
Makes sense?
Makes sense, more reasonable option, yeah.
All right, does everyone know Mark Bean?
Yeah. Hey, Mark.
Passed a council member and he's come tonight to offer some insight on the bridge.
Just to give you an idea, a little bit of history. Back in '04, '06, the bridge was assessed. And they went and did, checked the underside of the bridge, gunned out of it. And that was about all that was done in '04. Going forward to, and what they did is degrade the bridge because of the amount of galling that was going on underneath the bridge. They took the maximum load rate and dropped it just what, how they dropped it or how much they dropped it, I don't remember. But it was to a point where our police department, what we had at the time, was stopping heavy load of trucks and having offload on the western side and then take a, what you might say a lift truck and deliver whatever they had to deliver on the other side. In '16 or '17, they went ahead and inspected it again, changed a lot of the framework on the sides or how do you call it, safety, safety pieces of concrete, some were deteriorated and they replaced them. And at that time, what they did is they repaired the seawalls. The spaces between the original slats of seawall were starting to corrode quite a bit. So they went in and they filled them the best they could with the material they did then. The idea that was brought forward at that time was to do half the bridge at one time so that would give us access back and forth. And then what they would do, what they wanted to do at that time is inspect the slabs of concrete that they used to put the seawall in to see how much erosion was, was taken away off the sand or whatever and see how large they are. Because a lot of the sea bed holds those slabs of concrete in. Now, most of the, most of the caps were not done the way they are today. They're very minimal rebar or no rebar at all. So the slabs, once, once the top, top slab cracks, the slabs of concrete can fall in. We've had a few of those in the city that's happened to them. So what they were going to do then, if the slabs weren't deep enough, they were going to put, once half the bridge is taken out, they were going to go ahead and put all new seawall panels in on one half, both sides, west and east, and put a new cap in. And what they were going to do for the, for the piers to hold up the bridge was go behind the seawall so the bridge would have some kind of a crown. Yeah, it'd be a little bit of rise, but I don't think it would affect cars unless they were doing 40 miles an hour, although some do out there. So that was kind of what they talked about at that time. Nothing, no engineering was done, it was just conversation with a bridge builder at the time. And this is what they came up with back in '16, '17.
Thank you for that information. Any questions for Mr. Bean?
Maybe Kai, with this analysis that were, that you raised, that would confirm or make us feel okay about?
Yes, that's.
In the end?
Overall assessment will factor in.
Yeah, we'll, we'll learn all that.
Yes.
Secret, I guess. Okay, sounds good.
Could you give me an idea typically how much time, how much more time lifespan that countermeasures could have?
Not specifically, but he did mention that a lot of these bridges, I think this is coming up on its end of life, but most bridges are well past their end of life.
Most bridges in the area?
75.
75 years old currently. 75 years old currently.
Which one? Our?
Yeah.
Our's is 75. I thought you said it was 50, you think.
Is it 50? Okay.
Yeah, I was like, okay, yeah.
Okay, and what is the lifespan? 50, so we're at the lifespan, okay.
And what are we, 35, you said?
We're at 50 years. I know it's a 50-year lifespan, so we can extend that with the countermeasures. Hopefully, at least 25 years.
But I remember in the last meeting, I don't know if it's still true, but you mentioned things like there's another 25, 50, 50 years left, potentially, typically historically with other bridges. Something like this, yeah. That's what I remember you said last time, so, yeah. But we'll get that confirmation a little bit from when they do this analysis?
Correct.
Okay.
He will be providing that estimation of the additional extension of the slab.
All right.
All right. Any more discussion of 22nd Street Bridge? Any comments? Kai?
Plan to bring this to the December meeting.
All right. Well, we'll move on to general business then.
Uh, so, Attorney Myers is prepared to speak to this just because I have it out. It is a resolution that Attorney Trask has drafted and has somewhat of an understanding of it, but I prefer that she go over it and he'd be glad to elaborate more on it if he does come back.
Absolutely. I took a quick look at the resolution and the statute and tried to jog my memory after I got here since I didn't know this was the topic for you guys today. But the short answer is, the local act allows for certain properties to exempt from property taxes and that's kind of explained in the beginning, pretty aware as clauses of the resolution, what properties would qualify for that. There's also provision in the statute that lets cities of a certain size that, that have enough numbers within the county for affordable housing to opt out and allowing that tax exemption. So, what this does is allow you to opt out. So, if you do have these developments that set this criteria, which I think the conversations, that may not be something you have to deal with in the next year, but should you have those coming, you would, if you pass this, you would have opted out even having a tax exemption so you could still collect taxes on, on that property. That's kind of the big overview that gives you enough to kind of understand. And if there's a specific question, I can try to answer it, but you may have to wait for Mr. Trask for the next time I come back and I can review more before I get here. So, that was just my quick review of the statute before we got to this point.
Could you clarify the timing then? Is this something that we adopt now in case something comes along?
Yeah, you need to adopt it by January 1st to, for that, for that whole year. So, let's say you adopt it in December, it'll be good for January, from January 1st, 2026 through the end of 2026. If you choose, if it's still the law and you choose to do it again in 2027, you'll have to adopt it before January 1st, 2027 for it to be applicable that year. So, you want to have it there should the development happen, you're already opted out.
And we have procedural timing to do it for our next meeting, our December meeting in D.C.? Okay, great.
And what's the ramifications for, what's the negatives there?
If you don't, the negative, if you don't do it, then if you do have a development that qualifies.
No, I'm saying, if you pass this resolution, what's the negative?
The negative would, I guess, for you, no. I can't think of one. The negative would be for whomever may want to make this, build this development would have to pay property taxes. Because it doesn't allow.
So, it's not a negative for us?
Not, not for you.
For any residents.
I think the negative for, in my personal opinion, the negative for you would be to not pass this. Because you're gonna lose tax, yeah, you're gonna lose tax revenue if you don't pass.
Because you had my answer.
Yeah, oh, sorry. There's a lot of work to be done.
I had a good idea.
Are so many wouldn't permit such a development?
That's, I believe that was the conversation, but probably it's more of a, of a vendor's action than necessary.
Trying to figure out the likelihood it's actually happening.
So, the AMI that's calculated here is based on the area, the area you're saying is Penaltz County?
Yes.
So, therefore, we're having our averages dragged down by the AMI?
It's, it's mentioned in here.
Yeah, there's a lot of county reference in here, I just want to make sure that referencing is correctly. So, it's like the AMI calculated is on Penaltz County as a whole, not on Feller Beach as well, so therefore.
Yeah, right. And the very bottom, it shows you the numbers are based on the Schenberg Center for Housing Studies Annual Report and they put you there. So, all the, all the different municipalities are put with the county in that analysis they do to make that determination.
So, it's a resolution, I want to just be very quiet, sorry.
Yes, you have time to do it in December.
And I'm assuming that Attorney Trask did this because it's in our city's best interest to do this resolution?
I, I would agree with him, but I would agree with that.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that?
I think we should put it on that.
And it will be on the agenda on the 3rd, if I'm correct?
First.
First. Be here on the 3rd. All right. Well, do you have any other general business you'd like to discuss?
Kai, can I ask one question on the previous topic?
Sure.
You said we had to pass this by January 1st and then it's renewable on an annualized basis?
Yes.
If it did not pass, does it, does it probably have the ability to activate it a year later or is it a once and done, you can never do it again?
You can, my understanding, if you choose not to do it this year, I don't notice anything in the statute that says if you choose not to do it this year, but you decide to do it in 2027, as long as you pass before January 1st, 2027, you would be allowed to do so for that year.
So, I know the direction we're going with other communities, but we would be hit with that if they didn't need to die?
I don't notice anything in the statute that would prevent you from doing it later.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, what else you got?
Um, just want to mention that we've been collecting comments from the city.
Those are great.
From the proposal for the temporary fire station, we created the webpage and sent out an email blast to fire people to take a look at it and give us our opinion. We've been collecting them, I think we're somewhere between 10 and 15 current responses and we just provided those to you through the internet.
All right. I don't consider that to be enough. I would like you to send out the constant contact again and see if you can get more. The, the majority is for the utilizing the building and bringing in more safety in the Feller Beach and I'm all for that. I just, I just want to, I want more responses. Okay? Fair assumption.
It's not a violation of some type of rules with council members responding, because I do.
No.
You saw it, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I encourage all council members.
We might want to do like a door-to-door, I don't know, if the, because we only have limited amount of email addresses. And we could do another blast, do one more, see what that turns around.
This time I've, I pulled those email addresses, it was in the hundreds, what happened?
I'm worried about 400.
I was gonna say 400.
Well, we have some husband and wives, so it's not individual possible. We need door-to-door, I don't know. Okay.
Probably a couple of reminder grounds, do you think, in the email?
I mean, maybe try one more email, see whether it pulls in maybe to door or.
Right.
Best way to get one, whatever we can.
A response window, was there a response window in the email request? Like, we're gonna vote on this in law, like, are we having this in December? We didn't, kind of, just, just for people to realize the urgency of our response data. I'm sorry, what's, like, to make it roughly and give clarity, a little more clarity around how fast we want to make a decision on this, that might encourage the response.
Are you still working on it yet?
Like, we're gonna do this in, you know, we're gonna do, if we're gonna vote on this in, I don't know, two months or maybe a month here or something like that. We should, is it worth telling them that that's the proposed time we left to vote on this? And so, if you want your feedback, there's your window again.
Just give them a deadline.
Give them a deadline, so that, yeah.
They haven't done anything till we figure it out, so.
Right, but I mean, if you leave a necklace, it's gonna go on forever. They're like, ah, I don't need to respond, I don't see any urgency in this.
Would it make sense to have a contact and then have a summary readout at the next meeting and then have the next meeting as an opportunity to act on all that readout?
Uh, any, if we are not voting on it at the next meeting, that's, we could still open up, we could, we could actually have a discussion item where basically just say, this is what we're doing, here's where we, where we stand right now. But, you know, the problem with having the meeting is you only have people show up that don't want it.
I was actually thinking more of a city manager's summary in his statement of, we've got, we've done this survey, we have this many positives and this many negatives and this is how the trend is, or something.
I hate to base a decision on 15 emails.
I get that.
Right.
Can you turn on the sign off? No, but I can.
Those that are impacted are typically gonna be the most local and those that are not impacted aren't really thinking about it. So, I'd be, I'd be pushing for more feedback is a great idea.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have a problem walking the neighborhood and putting something on door. Do we even want to do some door tags or something?
Think maybe the best way.
Yeah, maybe so. Would you mind checking in to see what it takes to put your name and address on a card and stick it back in your mailbox? Okay, again, that way they don't have to read any of the pages. They just fill it out, stick it in the mailbox, don't pay postage. Yeah, let's do that. I think it's worth it if that's what.
Would it make sense as an alternative to do the constant contact and maybe put an online survey form, let me just hit a button and respond to the form as a survey?
I would say any way possible. What I don't want is duplicates.
No, I got it. So, yeah, I'd say anything you can do electronic that'll speed up the process and help you with the tabulation. Survey Monkey or Google Forms, or there are some really good tools out there that are free of charge that we can just add a form button to a contact, and it's like click here to give us your benefit.
That's, that's far above constant contact.
Yeah, we have that option, yes, the contact. Only I worry about is just people duplicating, you know, responses.
You just require, you require an email address or an address with the form and therefore you can, it will basically pre-select and pre-eliminate as they develop surveys. You can't do a duplicate survey.
When are we planning to do the repair, like, independent of the, the fire station decision? Are we, are we just gonna hold? Are we holding?
Possibly. There's probably.
Are we gonna design it specific for them?
No, but if you go ahead and modify it at this point and they turn and we do it, then you basically.
Well, that's what I was getting at, is it's, it's, you may not want to do that until you know what they're gonna contribute.
Right, right.
To make them be passionate.
Because what I was reading in the Ponce said, suggested there's no contribution. When I came to the letter, didn't it say that they're not gonna pay rent, did they, or did it say?
That was, that was, that was an opinion.
Oh, okay, that was, that was in the FAQ, right? That was from the FAQ from the, from the fire chief, right?
I don't, I don't.
I read that in one of the responses.
We've discussed any of the rent options. This was just, we need a place to hang out for two years. Can you, can you do that? We will actually, I said that, you know, we'll contribute to fixing, putting the house back in the living commission.
My understanding was that we were contributing the facility, they were contributing the crew and the county was contributing the paramedics, so it's kind of everybody's contributing.
Right, and I'm talking about the remodeling.
Remodeling, yeah, start remodeling. Well, they were gonna, they were picking up the tab for their specific request.
Yes.
They're doubtless above and beyond whatever.
Right.
Like, put the house back into its original state, I suspect, right? And we're not, are we allowed to make a lot of changes?
So, what you're on here, 50%?
You can do whatever you want to do with the money we got, I guess. We may make repairs currently.
As we want.
Yeah, I, I do, I do need to check with the fire station using it for facility long you use it for. I believe there's gonna be room to put additional equipment into it.
Right.
It's not gonna count towards our 50%.
Right, right.
We've already been determined not substantially damage or return if we received our insurance money for rebuilding.
The main thing is, is, is if, if the community decides this is what we want, everyone needs to be aware that we're not running emergency vehicles up and down. Right. That's, that's the picture that's being painted and we don't want that.
I thought the FAQ was pretty clear about that. I read that, that was excellent, right.
There's a lot of concern that we're gonna get our foot in the door and this is gonna turn into a permanent situation. I've heard that a lot of times. And then there's also people that would be okay with them somehow figuring out when operating out of this building, but they're just very against them operating out of Cedar. So, it's kind of up there.
What would be the negative, two years from now, you'd have any problems, you stay here and it helps our city? I just don't understand.
Hasn't been established that we will get paramedics?
It's nothing is finalized.
No, no, I can explain it. Basically, you, currently, we're not eligible for our own county-provided paramedic. The only way you become eligible is if you have a permanent firehouse. This isn't, this isn't permanent. And so, would they even consider it permanent? I don't know. However, what, what I've said that I would do is I would, I would get with the other mayors who are members of Penalos Sunco's Fire and Rescue, you know, in, in the, in the district and have them all come together because by us having one here, everyone else in the district, they benefit from it. Because we're not having to take resources away from them if something happens here.
Yeah, but correct me if I'm wrong, they keep, like, say, all those firemen are trained paramedics?
They're paramedics, but they're not EMS.
Right.
That's the difference. So, there's, there's, you know, they can administer CPR and do limited things, but whenever, in the case of a heart attack, something like that, you probably really do want the EMS paramedic.
I want somebody.
Yeah.
Somebody, yes.
I'll change your.
It's not blocking there.
All right. Do we have anything else before I adjourn us? Yes, Marv?
Hey, I'd like to talk a little bit about parking.
Parking?
Industries, yeah.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
If you're talking about that bridge, you're preaching to the choir.
Well, there was a lot of things that weren't mentioned, I think, I think you should look at. And the bridge seawall is an issue because of the seabed has been washed away and the original slabs aren't falling or go deep enough. The chances of that seawall going out is great. And the fact, the fact that the caps on them years ago, that then they rebarred. So, if they go and you got a lot of water behind them, there you go.
So, my suggestion to, that I wanted to, that I discussed with Kai was to pitch it to the Citizens Advisory Committee to basically ban fishing on those two bridges. And the reason why is because that's what everybody's parking there for. And you can flat out tell them that, hey, if the sheriff comes by, you're getting a ticket. Problem is, they know the sheriff's not coming by. And so, they'll just stick a middle finger up in the air and they'll keep on fishing.
Help me ground me on where the parking issue is.
It's on 22nd Street and on, where's the other?
Are they in the grass?
That's it.
They're in the grass.
Well, it's, it's not only parking in 22nd. I'll tell you what's been happening. And this started a number of years ago on Luisa, one house was built. And we had one woman that had diabetic issues. And the contractors parked on both sides of the street. And guess what? Ambulances could not get down the street. And we did a study, what the heck was it, 2018? When Leslie and Dusaro was there, they had the fire department. We parked cars on both sides of the street. I think on 25th to see if they would allow at that time parking for the beach access before that, during that conversation, and they tried to run a fire truck through there and couldn't. So, what's gonna be happening and on, what has happened on Luisa's street, we've had a lot of contractors park on the end because one house was taken down because of the flood and they had a fire. Next one was under construction. So, couldn't get any waste management through there, couldn't turn around. So, they had to back up 22nd during that process, or not 22nd, from 22nd down to Luisa. And probably after all that work was done, we had an issue where we had some landscapers coming with some large trucks, some trees. And there was somebody parked in front of my house and there was two big trucks parked across the street. Well, the police couldn't get down the street. So, let's, let's face it. If there was an emergency and cars were parked on both sides of the street, you'd never get an emergency vehicle down any of the streets in that event. Now, with all the conversation I've had with Kai, we just, I didn't know. I've been on council twice and all the times we reviewed the codes. been on council twice, and all the times we reviewed the codes, Kyle found that we had no parking in the cul-de-sacs. So we have a sign up on the end of Luisa, and hopefully that'll help for anybody parking in that area, because anybody coming down there, just a regular car or landscaper with a trailer, they can't turn around. And if you have a contractor with a semi, forget it, that is just not gonna, or a big truck, for that matter. So what I'm, what I'd like to see the council do is discuss putting signage up at the end of all of cul-de-sacs, wherever they are, and then eliminate parking on one side of the street, but alternate, either weekly, monthly, bi-monthly, whatever you want to do. So if anybody's having a gathering, they have to call anyhow. They have parking in the streets if you're having a gathering, a party, or whatever the case may be, but if there was an emergency and you had a house full of people, and somebody fell and got injured or had a heart attack, or got too loaded, whatever you wanted to, you'd never get an emergency vehicle down the street. So by eliminating parking on one side, then alternating that parking, so the neighbors don't get nailed all the time, cars parking on their side or the other side, this way we have a chance of getting an emergency vehicle down. And this happens at Christmas, all the worries throughout the city at Christmas. Any emergency, all, you'd never have an ambulance or a fire truck come down there.
Definitely something to consider, and I'm sure we'll be discussing it.
Well, I hope you do, because, you know, we've got some older people on my block, including me, so, and then, let's face it, when you have kids running around at the holidays and they go between the cars, and you got cars on both sides, you're never gonna see a kid. It just, that's just the way it is. And recently with the garage sale went on, we had young ladies with, with kids and buggies, we had motorized scooters, motorized bicycles, and then traffic two ways on Twenty Second, and going across the bridge, that was scary.
Yep.
As I look out back at the window and I can see Twenty Second Bridge, and that's one thing that you have to consider, building that new bridge, is to make it lighter, so that when people are walking, they go to the beach, and there's a lot of them that do that.
All right, Mr. Bean, I'm gonna have to stop you, because in the regular meeting, you'd give three minutes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you now, and just, thank you for speaking, and-
I will be back.
I appreciate your comments, and definitely we'll be discussing this probably in the next work session, because the, the parking issue is, is a big problem for me right now, and I think it's really, we just need to, we need to sit down with our code enforcement and law enforcement and issue some directives to help remedy this issue. And with that, counsel, do you have any more comments or anything?
One more, one more thing. The police cannot give a person a ticket for parking on either side of the street if there's a car parked on either side, we have no, no laws and books that say you can't.
Interesting.
Well, that's why they get permission then.
All right.
There's something about passage of vehicles in there.
Yeah. I mean, there's something there, but it's, you know, if we've got a sign that says no parking, there should be a fine that backs that up, because that's just stupid not having. It's a, a way to enforce it.
Also have no parking, where did it say, under, under no parking?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know why we have to do that.
I don't know, we just need to-
Have like a hundred and sixty-one dollars or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We don't decide.
Something that's enforceable.
Cause I'm, I'm over it, I'm just, they park right next to those signs, but anyway, all right.
Most you know, Jerry.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
How do you think you gave all the money?
Yeah, they, yeah.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks for all your work on this one.
What?
Thanks for all your work.
Oh, sure, thanks, we're proud.
You did a lot.